Call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2017-21 for September 5th, 2017. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Good morning, heaven. How long have you been here? That I came here come, that I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The highest is the kingdom, our power, and the glory forever. The citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2017.
So moved.
Second. Discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from June 20th in reference to Personnel Manual.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from July 18th in reference to the animal ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from July 18th in reference to the Councilmatic District MAP Software Demonstration.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. At this time, we have a proclamation for President Mary Ashani of Wycomico County NAACP. Yes, she is here. Okay. Great. President Ashani, I'm glad to see you found a place to park. All right?
If I started here, you were taken.
We were getting worried. Kind of getting worried. You could have. You could have. Why don't you introduce who you've brought with you briefly, and then we'll go with the proclamation.
Okay. Sandra Martin is the first vice president. Yolanda Mary, registered nurse, is our health committee chairperson.
Okay. Nice to have everybody here. This is a proclamation in awareness of Sickle Cell Anemia Month. It states as such, "Whereas sickle cell anemia is an inherited blood disorder that mostly affects people of African ancestry, but also occurs in other ethnic groups, including people who are of Mediterranean, Middle Eastern descent; and whereas more than 70,000 people in the United States have sickle cell anemia, and about 2 million Americans, 1 in 12 African Americans, have the sickle cell trait, which means they carry a single gene for the disease, but do not have the disease itself. And whereas sickle cell disease is a complex genetic disorder characterized by chronic anemia, episodes of debilitating pain and damage to vital organs; and whereas there is not a widely available cure for sickle cell anemia, although treatments exist for the disease's symptoms and complications. Now therefore be it resolved by the Wycomico County Council that September 2017 be it and is hereby proclaimed Sickle Cell Anemia Awareness Month. The County Council encourages all citizens to recognize and support this observance done this 5th day of September 2017, signed by the members of Wycomico County Council." President Ashani? There you go. Anybody who would like to make a comment? Give me one, please. Okay. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the NAACP, thank you.
Thank you, President Ashani. Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. I have one announcement to make, and that is the work session on Chapter 14 of the Personnel Manual will be postponed to the September 19th council meeting.
Thank you.
The first three items on the agenda are appointments to the Wycomico County Board of Education. At the November 2016 election, the citizens voted to have an elected school board. As part of the new process, a Wycomico County School Board Nominating Commission was formed that is responsible for selecting nominees to recommend to the county council as qualified candidates for appointment to fill a vacancy on the Wycomico County School Board. There are currently three vacancies on the school board. The six nominees recommended by the commission are Alan Brown, Sr., Dawn Sunny Becker, Kevin Lindsay, Michael Murray, Talana Watson, and William Turner. The county council interviewed all six candidates, and a public hearing was held on August 15th. Council then held a work session to discuss the nominees, and resolutions were prepared based on the three individuals most favored at that time in order to expedite the appointment process. Those three resolutions are in the briefbook for council's consideration. However, any council member may move to amend any of the resolutions to consider the appointment of one or more of the other three nominees. The first resolution is Resolution Number 112, 2017, confirming the appointment of William K. Turner to the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 112, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 112, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 113, 2017, confirming the appointment of Michael G. Murray to the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 113, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 113, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 110, 2017, authorizing J.G. Parks and Sons Incorporated as a sole source vendor for the purchase of parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance on Western Star trucks, and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase of said parts, service calls, and preventive maintenance during fiscal year 2018. This resolution was introduced at the last council meeting and tabled. The resolution has now been drafted with the revisions that were discussed. If council is satisfied with the revisions, a motion would need to be made to formally amend the resolution. Any language being removed is shown as a strike through, and the language being added is shown in all caps.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 110, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good evening, gentlemen. Could you just state your names and your positions for the public?
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent.
Mark White Lock, deputy director of public works.
So, has been, as Mrs. Hurley said, this did come before us before, and I believe we streamlined it a bit?
We made it just for the proprietary parts specific to the Western Star fleet. We took out the service of repairs. A lot of the service and maintenance is done in-house.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I don't have any questions. I was going to make a motion we approve as amended.
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion to...I have a question about how you read that to begin with. Are you stating that we need to amend it at the table today?
Yes.
Okay. So you're entertaining...you're making a motion to amend it as written?
As written.
Is there a second?
For the changes.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Amendment is approved. Continue with discussion on the resolution as amended. Any further discussion?
Thanks for taking care of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All those in favor of Resolution 110, 2017 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 110, 2017 as amended has been approved.
Next is Resolution Number 116, 2017, authorizing TIX Incorporated as a sole source vendor for the purchase of software in support for online ticket sales during fiscal year 2018.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 116, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Gentlemen? Steve, how are you?
Good. I, like I said, we have Steve Miller here, the director of Wreckin' Parks. I figured he could speak a little bit about what the TIX program is, and why we are using it, and why we feel we should continue to use it.
Sure.
Good evening. I like your beard. Oh, thank you very much. Just getting there. One week to go. TIX is a proprietary software that we use to sell tickets for Civic Center shows. We've had that for over 10 years at the Civic Center. They've not raised rates on us. We're satisfied with the service that it provides, and feel that changing that service would cost a lot of time and money in terms of buying new stocks, building a new layout, having a brand-new system. This is a service that has served us well, and at a price that we feel is very reasonable.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Are they pretty responsive when you have problems with your system? When they show up and take care of things? We're not...no downtime.
No, no problems.
Do you have many problems?
I'm sorry?
Do you have many problems with the software?
I've got lots of problems, but not with the software.
Good. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 116, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to stay? I'm on the next two.
Next is Resolution Number 117, 2017, approving a memorandum of understanding between the mayor and city council of Ocean City, Maryland, Wycomico County, Maryland, Worcester County, Maryland, and We Build You Play Sports Group, LLC. The memorandum of understanding is a three-year agreement for a Beach Fest volleyball tournament.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 117, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can I get a...an explanation of the difference between an MOU and a contract?
I don't know that I would be the best one to answer that.
Well, the words mean a lot of different things, but I think the short answer here is that I've looked at this document. It's a contract.
Seeing...
I can call it a memorandum of understanding, but, you know, it doesn't change what it is legally. It's essentially a contract. I would say that just a brief analysis of a memorandum of understanding is something that the parties can more or less cancel, walk out of any time they feel like it. When you get into these things like letters of intent, memorandums of understanding, oftentimes they essentially are contracts, even though they're not labeled as contracts. But this one, I think, is a contract.
So, that was my understanding, and I guess, under the termination clause on Number Seven, it says MOU may be terminated by written consent of all parties by January 1st of the respective event each year. So I kind of looked at that, and I thought, well, this is more of a contract than an MOU. And this really doesn't give anyone a way out. If it's an MOU, I would think an MOU would be something that would be less enforceable than a contract. Is that right, MOU would be?
Well, it depends on how it's written and what's in it. I mean, like you say, in this case, you've got termination, you've got a specification of work to be done, you've got an insurance provision. I mean, if it, you know, walks like a dark and quacks, I mean, that's what this is. This is a contract.
I guess that one, that Number Seven bothers me. It doesn't give anybody a way out for whatever decisions are made.
The...I'll comment, not from the legal perspective, but it does make provision to get out if funds are not available, because it's a three-year. If funding is not there, we'd have the ability to get out. And our financial commitment here is, this is almost the opposite of the World Series in that that was massive, that partnership with Ocean City and Worcester County. In that event, basically, it started in Wycomico County and built out to those other jurisdictions. This one started in Ocean City and is building towards us. So our financial commitment is only based on the number of hotel room nights in Wycomico County. So we're only paying in proportion to the folks that stay here, so that's the limit of our financial commitment.
So we're paying for...we pay this group?
Yes.
For how many people rent rooms?
Essentially, yeah. It's a volleyball event, and there is essentially a bid fee that goes to the organizer to help cover their costs. And we split it three ways between Ocean City, Worcester, and Wycomico, but it's based on where people are staying for the event.
Mr. Taylor, with your definition as far as the distinction between a contract and an MOU, do you see anything with this memo of understanding that really is going to compromise the county as opposed to whether it's considered an MOU or a contract?
I don't see anything that I would consider a deal buster or a deal breaker, but I would make the comment that I made a couple of months ago in regard to a lease, that I think that the liability insurance limit is low. I think there ought to be at least $2 million, and that seems to be the modern view of...with regard to insurance. It's a million dollars. That provision is worded somewhat unusually. If I were...had my brother's, I'd change it, but I mean, it's, you know, it is what it is, and I...there is a provision for insurance. I don't think there's a waiver of subrogation in there. I don't believe. I looked at it. I don't think there's a waiver of subrogation provision. It is a little bit open-ended to me as somebody who's looked at contracts before for people in terms of what the obligation really is. It sounds like some of the work that's to be done by city forces is to be done outside of the...pardon me, county, is to be done outside of the county in Ocean City.
There is.
And, I mean, it's somewhat, as I say, it's somewhat open-ended. I mean, there's a lot there. You don't know how much work you're talking about. Does that make it a bad deal? Not necessarily. I'm not speaking against the deal at all.
Right.
Yeah, there's a minimal amount of work that our folks would be doing outside of the county in this case, and the reason is because, quite honestly, we're set up to do this type of thing and have been doing this type of thing for many years. So the work in setting up the courts and doing those types of things is just a minimal time and expense for staff to be part of this.
So they will go to Ocean City and set up courts?
Yeah, they...we would have courts in each of the three jurisdictions, but we would provide technical support essentially in those areas, but...
So what, with our investment, what would be the return to Wycomico County?
Kristen, you've got all those numbers. Why don't you come up? Kristen's our tourism manager. She can provide this for you.
You were waiting for that, weren't you?
Hi. The overall economic impact for the event is slightly over $3 million, and for Wycomico County, we received this past year about 25% of the hotel room stays, so we'd be looking at 25% of that impact for here in Wycomico County, which is about 3/4 of a million dollars.
So that money goes right directly to Wreckin' Parks?
No, that's the impact on the community. So that's from folks staying in the hotels, dining and restaurants, things like that. The department itself does not make a profit off of this event.
Okay. We would benefit from...
I just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah.
Very nice.
It sounded good, didn't it?
We do benefit from the room tax for folks that would stay in the county.
Do you have that figure?
This year, we estimated it was roughly awash with what we contributed. We paid about $4,000 for this year based on the 25%, and the room tax was just under $4,000.
You say this year, so are you expecting a better return next year?
The organizer started this event with about 80 teams, and this past year, he grew to 216 teams. That's why we did it as a mass event this year. So this MOU, he's willing to lock into a three-year commitment, so we're hoping to work with him on that. And then if he has room to grow, then he will. The Civic Center was not available this past year, and it is available this coming year, so we're hoping that he'll be able to utilize that to grow the tournament further.
Which...where's the revenue coming from? Is it coming from the room tax? Or is it coming from general revenue? Where's the revenue coming from?
Can you explain what revenue you're speaking of?
To pay, you know, our share.
Oh, for the...for our portion of the seed money? That's from the tourism seed money account, which is funded through hotel room tax.
And that's an enterprise fund?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, on this Number Seven, A, where it may be terminated by written consent of all parties, do you see any problem with that? I know Steve says we could get out of it if there wasn't funds, but I guess there could be other incidences. Do you see any reason to change that, with that?
I'd probably not. I mean, it's a, you know, close call, but I would say probably not.
That's fine. We'll take our attorney's advice on that.
This is three years?
Yes. So it'd be for 2018, 19, and 20.
Okay. So maybe if, you know, depending on how the council votes today, something to consider would be a different type of an opt-out clause, as well as looking into consideration for an increase in insurance in the future. Because we want probably all entities to come to an agreement on that before we start taking it to individual council members for votes, or government bodies for votes.
Right.
Okay. Good. Any other questions, concerns?
All those in favor of Resolution 117, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 118, 2017, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award
from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, program open space in the amount of $175,050 to be used for the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex Field Expansion.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 118, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Steve? I'll have my shot.
Any questions from council?
Steve, what kind of surface is that?
I'm sorry?
What kind of surface is that on the softball field?
Synthetic turf is what's on the four new fields.
Is that the surface that we see at the eastern shore leg that has the turf over the mound and down the sideline?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
What's the funding from the state of Maryland as far as open space?
This year's total number was about $500,000 as far as what the county got. Part of that by open space law, part of that, 25% of that, has to be set aside for acquisition. So as far as what we had to deal with, it was roughly 300 and change as far as development projects. And as usual, the amount of requests we get for development projects always exceeds the number, but we're able to get a lot done with what we got.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 118, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 119, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Stephen E. Hill as a community trustee member to the trustees for the Employment Retirement Trust, as well as Gatsby 45 Trust. The board of trustees is responsible for the management and proper operation of the trust.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 119, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 120, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Brad Valachico as a community trustee member to the trustees for the Employees Retirement Trust, as well as the Gatsby 45 Trust.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 120, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution 120, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 121, 2017, confirming the reappointment of John S. Ellis, CPA, as a county trustee member to the trustees for the Employees Retirement Trust, as well as the Gatsby 45 Trust.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 121, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 122, 2017, approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2023 Consolidated Transportation Program. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works, here to answer any questions.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 122, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Discussion.
Now, and I am glad to see that they do have, as far as priorities, Route 50 and 60-foot road intersection. It's top priority. Appreciate that getting there, and I think the folks up north would be happy to see we've got the weigh station on there as far as relocation of that, so...and due to the recent flooding, number three is countywide maintenance and ditch cleaning and tree trimming on state highways. I know we've got some problems there, so...
I think you're right. We've been getting a lot of phone calls.
Yeah. Anyway.
Any other discussion questions, sir, Mr. Baker? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 122, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 123, 2017, to authorize a county executive to accept grant funds in the amount of $97,185 from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. This grant is awarded through the Circuit Rider Program and will fund the salary of a person to work for the towns of Sharp Town, Pittsville, and Willards for a period of two years to assist with the day-to-day planning operations and related questions from the public, researching various federal and state grant opportunities, preparing grant applications, and managing grant awards, overseeing special projects, and providing administrative support. And we have Mr. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning and Zoning and Community Development, here.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 123, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lennox, good evening.
Before Mr. Lennox gets here, I did receive a word from Sharp Town Town Commission President Doug Gosnell that he would appreciate an aye vote on this.
Pressure's on.
Yeah, exactly.
Whose district is that?
At large, it's all your district now.
Got troops.
Good evening, Mr. President. I don't think I could add anything to Mr. Gosnell's endorsement of this particular application, other than to say that the executives of both Pittsville and Willards have joined in as well. This is a type of topic that you would have seen through the budget process if the communities had sought the grant several months earlier. As you are well aware, any grant money, approval for grant money, acceptance must go through the council to incorporate in the budget. Since this came in after the budget, we need to do this separately. These are funds that the executive is looking to accept, really as a support for our three municipalities that are partnered in this. We don't see any financial obligation for the county. We do not have the final contract grant agreement yet. However, that will be subject, of course, to review and attorney's review as well, and we'll make sure that this ends up being an assistance to the communities that they can all benefit from.
Okay. Questions?
So this will be in the next two years, it'll be added to the budget as we go through that process, I'm assuming? Or is it one lump sum now?
It's spent over two years. It's spent over two years. Interestingly, the state grant, uh, period started on July 1st, so it might end up, the working period be less than 24 months, but, uh, we'll most likely have this recognized in the grant next year just to make sure all the numbers match up for the auditors.
What would you say the primary function's going to be of the individual?
I think that it's different for each of the communities. Uh, each of them have their, their own strengths and, and some challenges, as you know. Uh, on the east side right now with some of the, the comp plan updates and looking at their zoning, that might take priorities there. Uh, Sharp Town, for example, is, is pretty well established with their comp plan and the zoning, probably looking for more implementation at this point. But the good thing is that that is up to the communities and we'll have some technical support for them that they don't have right now.
Right. And will this individual be working in your office?
No, they'll be working as, as the name suggests, as a circuit rider. They will have, uh, office space available to them, probably a desk and a conference room, if only that, in the three, uh, town halls and, uh, but we will process the paperwork through our office and through our finance department.
On the seventh page of the document, when it refers to particular expenses and this noted as in-kind, 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 those are the individual, uh, municipalities that will share that burden?
That's correct. Yes, they're, they're demonstrating their, um, that's the office space, frankly. So they make office space, telephone, coffee machine, things like that.
Okay. And I guess, I thought it was kind of confusing because it didn't say which particular town would be facing what expenses.
This was the grant application that you're looking at?
Okay.
And so we'll see what the final contract comes, comes to say.
Okay, so those are just costs to anticipate.
Right, that was put together, uh, Tracy Gordy, uh, providing direct support to the towns, put together that application through Maryland Department of Planning. Uh, we'll see what that final, through D, Department of Housing and Community Development, we'll see what their final directive is on the, on the agreement.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, the actual grant agreement was hand-delivered to council today, so, and it was emailed out to everyone and it's on the council table.
Okay, thank you. I have not seen that, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other questions? That's good, thank you. All those in favor of, um, resolution one twenty-three, two thousand and seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Good evening, Mr. Taylor, how are you?
Good evening. This is legislative bill number two thousand and seventeen dash ten, introduced this date by the president of the council at the request of the county executive. It is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the faith, full faith and credit, pardon me, just the faith and credit, the word full is not in there. Uh, the, I'll repeat that, faith and credit of Wycomico County, comma, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10 million and to evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance or reimburse the costs of certain projects for the Board of Education of Wycomico County, General Services, the Sheriff's Office and the Roads Department, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing and equipping of land, facilities, buildings and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto. Uh, I'm going to stop at this point. What I've read is the text that appears in the agenda. It is not the full heading of the bill. I will continue and read the full heading if anybody wants me to. It will be about three times longer than what I've already read. Um, it generally has the same boilerplate you see in every bond bill, including the fact that you're going to have to pay the money back sometime.
Understood.
Thank you. And I will say this, I'm not actually presenting this, I'm, I'm reading the heading and I understand, I guess it would be Mr. Strasburg or, or someone from the executive branch who's a little bit more, you know, familiar with this particular bond bill and those projects than I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertain a motion from council to introduce legislative bill two thousand and seventeen dash ten.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Wayne, I know we've, uh, reviewed this several times. This is, I think, yes, if you don't mind, sure. We're probably on, what, the third step, third step of this, of CIP-related projects?
Uh, yes, this, um, the, the timing of this introduction is important because it ties directly into the date of the sale itself. So we, we will, um, we will actually be in New York, uh, October 4th, 5th and 6th, meeting with the three credit rating agencies. Uh, our credit ratings will then come out. That forms the basis for going to market, tells the market what our credit worthiness is. We anticipate that our bond sale will take place. I believe the date is December the 6th.
Okay.
And we would settle that sale, um, about a week later.
Mm-huh.
The projects that are funded by this are the projects that we included in the CIP and designated for bond funding. You recall, uh, that we are borrowing this year only that amount that we're paying off this year. So we have been borrowing at a rate of about $20 million a year. We're borrowing half that rate this year. So this is the first formal step, actually, if you take.
Okay. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Um, I'm going to take a roll call vote. I don't know if I have to take the roll call vote for the introduction of the legislation?
No introduction.
Doesn't hurt, so. All those in favor of legislative bill two thousand and seventeen dash ten, we'll start with, uh, Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Dodd, Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holliday?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, unanimous. Legislative bill two thousand and seventeen dash ten, the introduction has been approved. Mrs. Hurley?
Um, we can have a public hearing, the first meeting in October, which is October the 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we, uh, open the floor for public comments. I would like to, um, recognize that, um, Superintendent Hanlon is here tonight. Glad to have you here. We also have Delegate Carl Aronson somewhere stuffed out in that hallway. Should have reserved you a seat. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Bob Culver, County Executive. Council has had some concerns as to why I have instructed Director Shipley of the Emergency Services Department to proceed with the necessary communication work to activate a fire company in the now-stationed territory of one in the county, which I'm happy to explain. When I started my term shortly after the first months, then Mayor Jim Irtan demanded Wycomico County pay an additional $2 million towards Salisbury's Fire Department for answering the calls of Wycomico County, or he would pull the nuker option and all city fire trucks would go no further than the city limits. At that time, I promised the citizens of Wycomico County that I did not have to worry about the protection because the county would step up and cover those areas as well as all citizens of Wycomico County. Cooler heads prevailed and the election of city officers brought new mayor Jake Day. Immediately after his swearing-in, we got into, um, negotiations for a fire service agreement. We determined at that time the third party was needed to determine the service's worth, so we hired TriData to do research. After months of waiting for a report, the figure of $1 million was tossed out as a starting point to negotiate with. After committees were formed and a broad spectrum of participants, it was decided that a fee for service call would be paid and those numbers were incorporated into what is now referred to as the fire service agreement. The fee for service analysis determined that the county was already paying a fair amount. Mayor Day asked for several specific items to be included in the agreement. One such item was item eight, length of agreement. The parties here too agree into that the agreement shall be for a term of five years, commencing on July 1st, two thousand and seventeen, and terminating on June 30th, two thousand and twenty-two. If reimbursement formula set forth in paragraph C becomes financially unattainable for either party due to material unforeseen changes in insurance coverage or payments, then either party shall have the right to terminate the agreement by giving six months written notice. To properly protect the citizens, to be ready in six months if need be, I got the groundwork done to have another fire company protect the county portion of that area and only Station One territory. As well as make arrangements for each of the fire companies that border Salisbury, and that is Fruitland, Hebron, Parsonsburg and Delmar, to step up and cover any additional ground if that was to happen. My consideration of this is what I consider to be proper leadership. It does not mean sitting back and waiting for something to happen, yet anticipating the problems and heading them off. You must understand that we are currently paying the city less than we were three years ago and nowhere near the $2 million extra they had demanded or the city would stop covering the county. After researching the current calls and adjusting the formula that is set forth in the fire service agreement, we are on track to pay even less in 2018 by almost $200,000, thus creating a gap in the income for the city, not likely sustainable to them. Concerning that I did not consult with the council first, all department heads and directors are under my control and waiting for council to make this decision would probably have put the citizens in jeopardy. If this so-called nuker option never happens, then that would be a great thing for Wycomico County citizens, but it is better to be prepared and not needed than to sit back and answer why. I didn't see that coming. No matter what the council president feels and, and it's been on Facebook and in the paper and, and Mayor Day, I stand 100% behind my decision to do what I did. And if, if the people of Wycomico County feel that I did the wrong thing, then they'll show me at the next election. But I want you to know that I've had no part in, in awarding territory, that's not my job, never have done it. I have only prepared with Director Shipley to go ahead and be prepared if something should happen. If you, excuse me, I've got a previous commitment at seven o'clock, but I wanted to get this in before the, uh, work session, so.
So you won't be attending our work session?
No, I have, I have, Paul, I mean, excuse me, Paul will be here too, but Wayne will be here as well as, uh, Weston. Thank you.
Floor's open for public comments.
Joe Morris, President Wycomico County Fire Chiefs Association. I have come here this evening to clear up a few things. Uh, as the county executive alluded to, we sent you a letter with a list of reasons why the Wycomico County Fire Chiefs Association voted down the city-county agreement. Okay? I don't think everybody in Wycomico County understands what the Wycomico County Fire Chiefs Association has done over the last 40 years for this county. From the time the dispatch center phone rings at the 911 center to the time, whatever you ask for, fire trucks, ambulances, whatever it is, we take care of the procedures, the territory that's assigned, the way calls are dispatched, the mutual aid agreements, everything that is done from start to finish, this association takes care of, and we do it for absolutely nothing. We are all volunteers and we put the best interest of Wycomico County at heart. I also have taken a beating on Facebook and I don't know, I don't know if that gentleman is here tonight who has the blog site, but there's no way I can go rogue in anything. So I don't know where that came from. I don't have a vote in the association unless it is a tie. Our fire chief does that. I am the deputy chief of my company and the fact that my company was brought into this, I find a little discouraging, but it was a unanimous decision. The motion to scrap the city-county agreement came from Wycomico Salisbury Station Two. If you read the letter, Joel Dixon made the motion because at that time, his president still did not know how his volunteer firemans, or his volunteer fire company was going to be funded by the city of Salisbury. Station Two and Station Sixteen's volunteers are still part of the Wycomico County Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association and their concerns are also mine. The history of what the Wycomico County chiefs do for Wycomico County has been looked up in our minutes and go back as far as 2003, where the county attorney can be contacted by us at any time to ask any question that needs to be answered and we can seek advice from the county attorney. We have done this for years. We have settled disagreements for years. We are not irrelevant, as quoted by Mayor Day. And like I told you when I sat in front of you before, I wouldn't know Mayor Day if he was standing in this room and he might be sitting there. We have asked repeatedly, repeatedly for the city of Salisbury to sit down and work this out. Company number one, Station Thirteen, now Station Thirteen, was given the number Station Thirteen so that there wasn't any argument and we would have to go through the litigation to wait for a judge to say, okay, you are Station One. Like Bob Culver, we are trying to be proactive so there is no gaps in service in allowing a fire department who was under the umbrella of the city of Salisbury, set up by the city of Salisbury, as three different corporations, company number one, company number two and company number sixteen, to be a fire company. We didn't set that up, the city did. It's not our fault, they could do what they did. The Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Association recognizes independent company number one, Station Thirteen. They are listed as company number one twice, you can look it up, it's right on the internet. They are the dues-paying entity to the Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Association. Justin Elliott, I think, is your secretary?
Yeah.
It's right on there. We established that months ago. All this rhetoric and division and slander, basically what it amounts to, is not coming from the Wycomico County Fire Chiefs or the Wycomico County Firemen's Association. It's coming from the city. And it, you know, it makes us all look bad. Now, the mayor has decided he is not going to sign off for the distribution of the 508 money. Well, there's nothing faster in solidifying the union between individual volunteer fire companies than to tell them that they're not going to get their money. And they are here tonight. Every chief of the association is here, there are people here from the volunteer fire service and together we have come to talk to you and to tell you that there's an issue, we're taking care of it. We've taken care of it in the past and if individual agencies will not sit down and discuss issues like was presented to us, we were given a mat with this territory, clearly dividing the bypass, clearly dividing company number one's territory with a list of stipulations from the mayor. So how can you say that that never happened when there's an email? It's become very frustrating and the chiefs and the fire departments of Wycomico County are tired. We've come up with a solution, um, we've come up with a solution that's the, for the most part, the betterment of Wycomico County, we've been doing it for years. If, you know, there's a lot of other chiefs here, I'm sure they have something to say. Um, I just wanted to explain that, that there was no rogue action by the Chiefs Association. We're frustrated, we're trying to come up with a solution. We came up with a solution to the problem that we thought everybody agreed to and now it's progressed into what it is now. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary or Shanti and I'm President Wycomico County NAACP. And as always, I thank God for the opportunity, uh, to be before you, um, tonight, um, to President Cannon, members of the county council and those, uh, assembled, good evening. And I'll read my comments. The Wycomico County Branch NAACP advocates for rights and equality of all people. Our conscious leadership is our Our conscious leadership is obligated to respond when those who have elected us, appointed us, and designated us to be the voices and conscience of a people. Recently, we witnessed the emotional and physical devastation fashioned by hate and bigotry from the faces of white supremacists in the city of Charlottesville. While the city of Salisbury did not experience repercussions from this ill-fated demonstration of civil rights, we applaud Mayor Jake Day and the city of Salisbury for joining marriage around the state to acknowledge that racism is still alive and a real part of the lives of some of those who have authority over the nation's people. Our nation's highest elected authority refused to accept responsibility for this act which inflicted not only those in Charlottesville, but cities around the globe who watched with familiar frustration. The Wycomico County NAACP joined others who publicly denounce the actions of white supremacists, a delusion of their superiority to controlled behavior. The NAACP has received thousands of calls and emails throughout its branches from citizens around the country asking, what can I do? Wycomico County NAACP Branch 702-8 requests that Wycomico County government remove the plaque from the courthouse lawn that reminds us of hate, of hate and bigotry, from the same courthouse lawn that also reminds us of the horrific public hanging of one of this county's citizens. Nothing in government can change the hearts of men, but the hearts of men can change government. The politics of government is an available resource when administrations choose not to make unpopular decisions. City's problem, county council's problem, or the elected county executive problem. This is a national problem, where our local officials are granted the privilege to do what's right for the citizens they serve. Thank you. I will leave a copy of this, and also, I'm not going to read it, but I'm going to leave a copy of, it was in the Daily Times, about Salisbury mer signs on to National Anti-Hate Initiative. We're hoping that other towns in Wycomico County would do that, and we're hoping that the county council will also do that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shaw.
Good evening. I'm Alex Paciga, I am a citizen of Wycomico County. Distinguished members of Wycomico County Council, we are here today to represent concerned citizens of Wycomico County in regards to the historical marker commemorating Confederate General John Henry Winder, which currently resides on county property in the city of Salisbury. We have submitted a petition to the council with over 300 signatures, and a request that the marker be quickly removed from its location. The reason for such action being that, one, General Winder was in overall command of Confederate prisons during the American Civil War, including the infamous Andersonville, otherwise known as, quote, Camp Sumter, where well over 10,000 Union prisoners of war perished because of maltreatment, disease, and neglect. General Winder's direct subordinate, Henry Wertz, was tried and executed for his crimes. General Winder escaped prosecution due to his premature death mere months before the end of the conflict. Two, General Winder has no direct connection to the location outside of the courthouse where the marker currently stands. He was born near Nanticoke, and though his family hails from this area, the man himself had little connection otherwise. And number three, the markers, most egregiously, the marker stands tall over the sites of more relevant historical events connected to that location, mainly the slave pens of the former Burr Tavern, Frederick Douglass's speech given in February of 1880, and the site of the lynching of Matthew Williams by hundreds of white Salisbury residents in 1931. The location was chosen for the marker and approved by former representatives of this council in 1983, at the behest of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, after it was involved in a number of motor vehicle accidents at its former location on Route 13. Following inquiry into its status with the Maryland Historical Trust, we have learned that if it were to be moved to an alternate location, it would have to come at the request of the Wycomico County Council. Either removal or relocation, the process begins and ends with this representative body. The sign is more than just a historical marker. It is a symbol of division in our community, and a glaring example of the institutional white supremacy that permeates our country's history, culture, and government. What happens to it afterwards is irrelevant, but it must be removed, for we feel it serves as an indelible stain on our community's image and a festering inquiry into our community's soul. We, concerned citizens of Wycomico County, have presented this petition to you for your consideration, and request a decision on the status of this marker and reasoning behind said decision with all deliberate speed.
Good evening. My name is James Yamakawa. I have many callings in life. I am a husband, and a father, and a Christian. And tonight, I am here as the head of our local chapter showing up for racial justice. I stand here because this council, elected by the people of our county, has chosen the path of prevarication or silence when it comes to what to do with the General Winder sign outside the old courthouse. I could ask you, again, to consider our petition to remove it. I could ask you to consider your legacy, and what is the moral thing to do, but I won't. Because while removing this sign is important to us and to many in the community, it's not the only thing. We will be partnering with Phoenix Youth Project, with other concerned and like-minded citizens and groups of this county and across Delmarva, to work with the Equal Justice Initiative out of Montgomery, Alabama, on a soil collection project to honor the memory of those young Black Americans lynched by white Eastern Shore mobs. We will have that conversation whether you want us to or not, and that will lead us to eventually bringing a lynching memorial to Wycomico County to remember Matthew Williams and Garfield King, so that our community can begin to face its history with courage, with humility, and with the knowledge that we can be better than we are. We are going to do this, because this is our home, and we will not give up making it one we can be proud of.
Here I go. Look at me. Do I make you uncomfortable? Does my pain, does my anger, does my distrust for you make you uncomfortable? Well, I'm here to tell you, it is you that make me uncomfortable, each and every one of you. Councilman Cannon, Councilman Dodd, Councilman Davis, Councilman Kilmer, Councilman Hall, and Councilman Holloway, you make me uncomfortable, which is why I am making a stand today. I won't spend time telling you why the removal and the replacement of the Winder marker is just and should be a priority after years of burying the pain of this area. There are members of our community, those who have voted for you, those who votes you would like in 2018, that would share their reasons, and it's those votes and it's your actions that will determine if you will be seated in the very place you sit before me right now. I live in a city that is enriched with culture and history, but I am uncomfortable, and if I'm honest, I'm upset. That history has been completely whitewashed. I stand here as a community member, as a community activist, as a mother, and as your peer, asking you to help me and the Black community unearth the history that generations of leaders, some in your position once before, have decided to ignore. And I will be the first to say, some in our community have decided to forget. A common phrase used time and time again regarding this marker from opposing sides, save our history. I ask those people, who history are you really trying to save? The history of the location of where this marker is, I believe, is more important than the marker itself. It's the place where individuals who looked like me, lives were sold and bartered, where sons who looked like me, mothers lost their lives and were taken, and where a man who I see as a marker for history in a Black culture, but he also saw the glory of this world, and he honored the struggle. Frederick Douglass said, "There are no struggle, there is no progress." Those who profess to favor freedom and yet depreciate aggravation are men who want crops without plowing up the ground. They want rain without thunder and lightning. They want the ocean without the awful roar of its waters. This struggle may be a moral one, or maybe a physical, or both, but it's a must struggle. And again, I ask, do I make you uncomfortable? Because if I do, you need to stand.
Good evening. I stand before you today to try to put some reality in what's going on. It's hard to believe that I had a conversation with a man who had a conversation with James... not James, the man who's on the sign, I'm sorry. I'm, 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 I had a conversation. Now, I can't tell you about that conversation, but within a period of two years, you'll read about it in my book. I have written three books, and I'm still writing. This book will be written specifically about the conversation this man who had a conversation with me 70 years ago, about this man. And I'm, I'm, I'm not here to tell you about this, but I, I want you to wait and read it in my book when it comes out. You have to buy the book.
I knew that was coming.
I was on the council here 12 years, and I, I never knew that sign was there. One day, a concerned citizen came to me and said, Mr. Taylor, you are on the council. Why, why are you all letting that sign stay on the courthouse lawn? I felt very, very low. I never read it. When I did go and read it, I sat down and wrote a letter to Matt, Matt Kramer. Matt was, and his title was, uh...
County Administrator.
County Administrator at that time. And you're going to have to forgive me, because I don't write things down unless I'm putting them on paper. I speak from my heart. I said, I told Matt I would like for him to present to the county council my request to remove this marker four years ago. The reason I'm here tonight is because some citizens said, why don't you go up there and tell them that you tried to get it removed by the county council four years ago? That's why I came. I hate to admit this, I had given up. I had given up because I don't want to do much of anything anymore but right, and I plan to do that, that I, until I'm 100 years old. I'm very close to that right now. So what I'm saying to you tonight, I started this, and I'm standing here tonight asking this council to help me finish it.
My comments will seem very boring compared to the last two speakers, but they are in the same vein. Uh, my name is Mark Decker, I'm a Salisbury resident. Uh, I stand here today to express my belief that the sign commemorating Confederate General John Winder should be removed from county property. It's obvious that having such a sign in such a location is meant to be an honor, and I see no justification for Wycomico County honoring Winder while ignoring the actual history that took place on the site. Now imagine if the Winder sign did not exist today. Would anyone here champion installing such a sign in that place honoring that man, and if so, why? What did he contribute to Salisbury, Wycomico County, or even the state of Maryland? Winder left Maryland as a child and adopted South Carolina as his home state. It was as a South Carolinian, not as a Marylander, that Winder took up arms in rebellion against the United States of America and thus against the state of Maryland. The sign was erected in the 1960s, and it's not a coincidence that this was during the height of the civil rights era in the United States. It was put up as a message, and they had to fish around for a guy whose connection to Wycomico County was so tenuous as to be absurd. The sign is not historic. It's a whitewashing of history that ignores the fact that Winder oversaw the single greatest war crime that took place on United States soil, the deaths of an estimated 13,000 American prisoners of war in horrific conditions at the Confederate camp in Andersonville. Winder's direct subordinate, Henry Wertz, was the only soldier on either side of the Civil War to be tried, convicted, and executed for war crimes. Winder most likely, as mentioned before, only escaped a similar fate because he died before the war ended. By the way, there was testimony at Wertz's trial, which said that Winder knew full well about the supply problems, had the means to fix it, and he didn't. In fact, there was even a witness who said that Winder boasted he'd killed more Union soldiers than any other Confederate general. Robert E. Lee himself stated his objection to Confederate monuments, saying the nation should, and I quote, "obliterate the marks of civil strife," unquote, when he was asked about memorials put up after the war. Today, we see why such monuments have become beacons of white supremacists and neo-Nazis to rally around and express their hateful ideologies as seen to deadly effect in Charlottesville, Virginia. This is because you cannot separate white supremacy and slavery from the Confederacy. Despite revisionist loss-cause attempts to redefine the Civil War, there is no historical doubt that the core motivation of secession was to preserve the institution of chattel slavery of Black persons. And not just to preserve it, but to see it expanded to the Western Territories and beyond. The Confederate Vice President Alexander Stephens himself declared slavery was the, quote, "cornerstone of the Confederacy," unquote. He even went so far to state that the Declaration of Independence aired when it said that all men are created equal, and that the Confederacy was the fixing of that era. Why do we honor someone who fought for that here? What message as a county are we sending to people of color who reside here by honoring Winder like this? I call upon the council to have the same courage Governor Larry Hogan had in removing glorifying monuments to individuals who championed slavery and white supremacy. Like it or not, Wycomico County is now part of the national dialogue on Confederate monuments, and the direction the tide has now turned on that is obvious. Don't let our county be left on the wrong side of history.
Hello, councilmen. My name is Seamus Ben. I'm 17 years old. I'm a resident of District Four of the Wycomico County. I will be able to vote in your elections next year. I come before you today because of my concerns that are shared by many residents of Wycomico County pertaining to the Confederate General Winder sign, that as of now resides just outside this building on the old courthouse lawn. Confederate General Winder was responsible for the deaths of 13,000 United States military service personnel, and many more atrocities at Camp Sumter. Had it not been for his untimely death in South Carolina in 1865, he would have been hanged for his war crimes. He was even named in his subordinate's, his subordinate, Henry Wertz... He was even named in his subordinate, Henry Wertz, charges. According to the official military tribunal transcript, one of the thirteen charges read against Henry Wertz, "combining confederating and conspiring together with John H. Winder, Richard B. Winder, Joseph Isaiah H. White, H.S. Winder, R.R. Stevenson, and others unknown, to injure the health and destroy the lives of soldiers in the military service of the United States, then held and being prisoners of war within the lines of the so-called Confederate states and the military prisons thereof, to the end that the armies of the United States may, might be weakened and impaired in the violation of the laws and customs of war." Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamal Gould, and for those of you that don't know me, I'm a black man. Right? That's obvious, right? The marker that everybody's been speaking about is the obvious one. John H. Winder was a Confederate general. It doesn't delve deep into what that really means, just like me saying I'm a black man. It doesn't delve deep into who I really am. That doesn't tell you that at one point I learned to hold a gun without anybody ever knowing that it was on me. It doesn't tell you that at one point I thought about killing my own brother. It doesn't tell you that at one point I had suicidal thoughts and thought about killing myself. It doesn't tell you anything. It doesn't also tell you that I graduated Bowie State University with a 3.0 GPA. Doesn't tell you that I was a Student Government Association President. It doesn't tell you that I'm working on my master's degree right now. That sign doesn't tell us anything. It gives a vague version of the truth. When we take people to court, we tell them to tell the truth, nothing but the truth and the whole truth. How can we ask people that on a courthouse lawn when a sign that's outside of it doesn't tell the whole truth? It tells a very small portion, and everybody said the same thing. This man has committed many atrocities against this great country that we call our own. Yet we stand here today, many years later, still talking about him, commemorating him, acting as if he was a hero. He was a villain. Let's not call it anything other than what it really was. The man killed over 13,000 people. He committed treason against the United States of America. Yes, he graduated West Point, and that sounds nice, but it's just a piece of history. If we're gonna have a marker there, if we're gonna talk about him, let's talk about it. Let's tell the whole truth, but we can't continue to tell a piece of the truth. We can't continue to pretend that these type of markers don't incite fear into African-Americans everywhere. I have over twenty-one niece and nephews. I fear for them every day because they're young and they don't understand the world. And these type of markers are everywhere. When they see these, they have to think about the people that they are, that we would, as a nation, commemorate these type of peoples that would do these types of things. That's not a nation I want to live in. That's not a city I want to live in. That's not a county I want to live in. The county council thus far has been silent on this matter. Why? That is beyond me. But I'm looking at all of you right now and asking you, pleading you, please make a vote on this. Either get rid of the marker or don't, but you have the power to do either one. But sitting silent is way worse than doing nothing, than doing something. Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Donald Singleton. I live in beautiful downtown Maradella Springs. For those of you who don't know, that's a joke. At the end of the Second World War, the Allies and the new German government passed a law making it illegal to display any form of Nazi symbolism. That law is still on the books, folks. It's unfortunate that this country did not do the same after the war to protect and extend slavery. The history of this plaque has been stripped from it. The man was a traitor to his country and a mass murderer. What in the name of God are we doing with a plaque to this guy on a courthouse lawn? It's like putting up a plaque to Hitler that says, "This man invented the Audubon and the Volkswagen." Hardly, hardly historical truth. The plaque is offensive. It offends me, and it offends anyone else with two brain cells to rub together. When I took the famous "one step forward," recited the oath to enlist in the United States Army, I vowed to defend the Constitution against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. That oath does not have an expiration date, nor does it admit of local exception for traitors. The oath is not unlike the one that all elected officials are required to take when assuming office in Maryland. You want to talk about heritage? A heritage where slavery stole human lives at the point of a gun, at the end of a lash, at the end of a rope. Some bloody heritage. Pull this plaque up by its roots, and if some of these honorable folks who defend it are so hell-bent on genuflecting to a heritage of pure evil, then let them plant it on their lawn so everybody who passes by can know what they're about. This ain't rocket science. This council needs to rid this county of this evil racist symbol. This council needs to do the right thing.
Is this thing on?
Yes.
Oh, it has certainly been entertaining seeing all the social justice warriors. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, my name is the Rabbi Alan Bailey of the Delmarva Messianic Fellowship, and, um, I'm here on the side of sanity. And while I am sympathetic to all four black people in this crowd, no offense, guys, um, I am a Jew, and we do have similar backgrounds. So I'd like to ask a couple rhetorical questions just to get you to think about where do we go from here? We're here, all right? We've had our governor who, you know, sabotaged the city's monuments. I would, in listening to some of the entertaining, and I'm not gonna comment, but some of the entertaining repeats of history, how were slaves bought and sold in Maryland if Maryland was not a Confederate state? So, you may want to do a little bit more historical research. Anyhow, so we've entered a stage in society where we mustn't offend anyone, but on some level, everything is offensive to someone. So who determines what's offensive? Are people today really so unencumbered that they wish to lament the struggles from generations long past? Shouldn't we, by such standards, erase all state memorials as Maryland was in the Confederacy? Or at bare minimum, at least erase all nomenclature such as the flag, the state name, city names, et cetera? Shouldn't we destroy Mount Rushmore for the Native Americans? The Lincoln Memorial has its gospel truth that Lincoln, his initial motive was only to preserve the Union, not free slaves. That is gospel truth. According to most Middle Eastern countries, America is the symbol of oppression to them. Should we not destroy her as not to offend them? Who here today is physically oppressed by this sign? Okay. One voice, all right? Two, okay.
Excuse me.
So... I did have a reference to the Exodus, but you're all Americans. I'm fairly certain that you know the story 5,778 years ago. What about my people? Should we storm into Egypt and demand every idol be smashed down in the name of oppression? Or is their history more valuable than three centuries of our slavery? What if King Tut's tomb was never found because me and my people had this same event and said, "No, we want it all destroyed. We want all the gold melted down and turned into something else. We want all history, every idol, destroyed because it was built by our people." We know indefinitely that almost every single idol in one specific city was built by us. And again, believe me, I'm not unsympathetic to what the peoples of the past have endured, both yours with respect and mine with respect. But what I'm trying to issue is, or what I'm trying to illustrate, is where do we stop? Where is the line between the reality of oppression and the insanity of political correctness? Erasing history only weakens the lessons that we are to learn from it. George Orwell said, "The past was erased, the erasure, uh, erasure, excuse me, forgotten, and the lie became the truth," in a book that some of you would know called 1984. "We are not makers of history; we are made by history," Martin Luther King Jr. "A people without the knowledge of their history, origin, and culture is like a tree without its roots," Marcus Garvey. "The more of your history that you know, the more liberated you are," Maya Angelou. "What would happen if history could be rewritten as casually as erasing a blackboard? Our past would be like the shifting sands of the seashore, constantly blown by this way or that by the slightest breeze," Michio Kaku. Again, I honestly couldn't care less about the sign. I'm not here on some kind of Nazi white supremacist. I'm just here on the side of reality. Where do we draw the line if everything is offensive? Everything has to come down. Maryland was a Confederate state. Do we hit the reset button? Start over? Yeah, it was. Read a little bit. So... Okay, so let's say we dismail the sign or move it. I don't know whose property it is, you know? Say move it to private property. Um, I'm told the guy's not even from Salisbury. He's from Allen or something like that. Where do we stop? Is there a line? And how do we rationalize coming to grips with the past and saying, "These are the atrocities that happened. We celebrate it once a year. We have the Passover. I'm sure you guys are familiar. And we celebrate our freedom. We never forget. But we also don't look for things to be upset about." You know, I could be upset at, I can't think of the name of the company, Ubisoft. I could write Ubisoft a letter. I could get a petition signed, a motion. There's seven hundred and some signatures to preserve this plaque for some strange reason. I've never seen such a public outcry over a sixteen-inch sign. Uh, anyway, I could write Ubisoft about the new Assassin's Creed game because it takes place in ancient Egypt, and there's no Jews. So how do we draw the line between freedom, freedom of speech, and historical accuracy, which you guys obviously aren't a fan of, and political correctness or feelings? Because words, signs, monuments, they only have the power that you give them. They're not even worth the metal they're made out of. In my religion, they're idols. I'd like to see them all smashed, personally, but that's, you know, I'm not trying to bring my beliefs into this room, right? Separation of church and state. So... So there you have it. That's my question. I want everybody, and I realize everybody giggling, I'm not gonna change their minds, but everybody here with a rational brain, I'd like to know, where do we draw the line?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Excuse me. This is a public hearing. You need to give him the time to speak, just as we've given everyone else the proper time to speak without interruption. If you... No, it's a rhetorical question. I'm sorry if we don't respond. Thank you.
And again, I don't care about the sign. I'm absolutely not unsympathetic to the peoples here, you know? And if I at all seem that way, please forgive me. I am, you know, I am a rabbi. That is not my, you know, I came here to try to shed some sanity on the entire situation. And I just don't see an end. It gets more and more crazy as the months progress, and I think anybody here, white, black, Jew, Puerto Rican, would say the same thing. What's next? Do we tear the... You said the building had slaves bought and sold. Shouldn't we tear the building down? Shouldn't we burn it to the ground? But isn't that the next step?
I'm sorry. You asked a question. I gotta answer.
I understand. So it's, you know, and we say that now, but if you would've said ten, if you would've said in the 90s that racial tensions procreated by the media would be what they are today, you'd have been laughed off the face of the planet.
If we could ask you to rap, Rabbi?
Hmm?
If I could ask you to rap, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, that's my thing, is let's take a step back, take a minute. I honest to God don't care about the sign, and say, where do we, you know, when we start erasing history, what do our kids learn from it? You know, if I take out the, you know, "Well, our children were thrown in the Nile River," and I don't tell my son that part because it's gory and graphic, what have I done other than erase part of our history? So... There will be negative repercussions from trying to erase the hurtful things from the War of Northern Aggression. I know you guys love that term. So, that is my statement. Let's step back, take a breather, and look at what we seek to erase and the future repercussions that future generations will bear from erasing those things. And do we really, you know, the CIA doesn't even have to monitor our speech. We have you and you, you know, we have social justice warriors to do it for, you know? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoever else would like to make public comments, please come to the podium, please. Excuse me, if you have discussions, could you take that outside, please? You can continue. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Members of the county council, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. My name is Jared Shabline, and I'm with the... My name is Jared Shabline, and I'm with the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus. I did not originally intend to speak today, but due to recent comments, I have since changed my mind. I would like, I first like to say I stand in solidarity with Serge Delmarva and the other members of the speakers calling for the removal of the sign. I personally find myself as a history buff, and the last comments I heard I found pretty puzzling because I didn't hear much history. I'd like to start by saying, those who believe that slavery was not the central point of the Civil War may want to wish to pursue South Carolina, Georgia, Mississippi, and Texas's Declaration of Succession. Those documents all explicitly cited threats to slavery as reason for succession. Mississippi's Declaration goes as far to say that "a blow at slavery is a blow at commercial and civilization," end quote. This, we have to think about what the sign actually means, and what the sign says to various members of this county council, of this county is. It is a symbol of white supremacy and is a symbol of hatred. I also too have Jewish roots, and I just recently discovered that within my family. I too closely relate to the Jewish religion. I do not have an official, I don't practice organized religion, but if I did, it would be of the Jewish faith. We do have very much similarities in oppression, and as was said earlier, when you go to Germany, you don't see monuments of Nazi Germany. Even here in the United States, you don't see monuments of King George to remind us of who lost the Revolutionary War. You just don't see that. What the sign does is it brings back a very dark period of our history. It talks about a man who committed war crimes. It talked about a man who succeeded from the United States and fought a war that killed American men and women who served to preserve the Union. There is absolutely no place for it on public grounds. If we want to keep it, it should be, if we, I hear the term "erasing history" a lot. If you want to preserve history, it should be in a textbook, and it should be in the museum, and it should be the full story, not just a small segment. I'm coming up here today to ask the county council to take a stand, not to sit quietly. Maybe you disagree with everything I say, but the majority of people came here tonight to say, but I'm asking you to vote on it one way or another. Take a stance. The hottest places in hell are reserved for those in times of trial who don't take a stand. So, I just want to finish by saying, I'm just asking the council to at least bring it to a vote. Say something, anything at all. Thank you.
Well, I don't know where we're going to get into all this tonight, but I'm here for another reason.
Sorry.
That's okay. You've educated me on some things. I see some light on both sides. But what you should be doing is trying to erase a crude man instead of, you know, the Confederacy. And the rabbi did have a good point, how far do you go? Martin Luther King didn't oppose gay marriages. So, when the gays catch on to it, are you going to erase his name off of everything? So, I mean, you know, fight for the right things, don't take history away. If the man was a dirtbag, then get rid of the sign. But you're doing two different things. You're saying Confederacy, and then you're saying how bad he was, which I didn't know how bad he was, but anyway. So, I got my own problems.
County Council.
I've talked to a few of you guys.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, David Bromley. I live in Pittsfield. I know some of you guys, dealt with some of you people. My daughter bought a piece of land on Friendship Road, and it's been the hardest process that I've ever thought I had to go through for anything. We had to flake tooth and nail for perks. Then they give us a perk, and it's a 12-inch trench system, so it's a very common system. But lo and behold, it's in a forestation area. They told me to come up here and apply for a $30 permit for an exemption, and we could flip-flop some land, which they have land in the back, which is forest. And this land here that we were, want to do is highlighted. It's clear, there's no trees there, period. Well, my $30 went to $480, and now they're denying it, and they want $1,100. I've offered to trade them two to one, and I'm not getting no answers. I think maybe this might have to come from the executive side, I don't know, but I need to make you guys aware of it. This shouldn't be a hard process. They're saying it has to be advertised and all this. Honest to God, whose business is it if we just flip-flop a spot, you know? I don't see where it needs to be advertised for 30 days. I don't see where our lawyer really needs to look at it. I do understand planning a zoning needs to look at it, and I guess from what I'm hearing, they're going under their guidelines. Would be nice to get an exception or exemption. I can't see where any environmental person would kick it against us for us putting a septic area in an open space versus we're going to have to do about a thousand-foot road back to where the septic area is, and then clean up a couple acres for the septic area that has nice pine trees and oak trees and everything else. So, you know, rules are rules, but sometimes it's got to be some common sense in there a little bit too. So, I hope you all will take this in consideration, and hope Mr. Culver and his office will apparently do a little something to change the process of this, but for right now, we're in a stalemate because I can't see paying you guys $1,100. It looks like to me it's more of a money thing than a common sense thing. It should, and I know it's because I want it, it seems simple, but I can't see in anybody's eyes where it can't be as simple. And like I say, we've offered two to one, and that's been shot down. I don't know what they want other than money, so.
Mr. Bromley, if you could leave your name and your phone number with Mrs. Hurley?
All right, no problem.
I got it. Thank you.
Hope you get that fixed for him. Good evening, council. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us to speak. My name is Julie Bruington. I'm from Wycomico County. I came out because there's a big fire issue, fire department issue here tonight. And, you know, the way often consensus is achieved is, starts out by relationships. And that sort of greases the wheel to get agreement to things if we are respectful and kind to one another and try to listen. There's not a lot of that going on in our country these days, and it brings us to the issue a lot of people are here for, which frankly, I feel like has hijacked the poor firemen who have important issues, and all of us who are concerned about our houses that hopefully never burn down. I witnessed my neighbor's house burning down a few months ago, and it is, believe me, a very important issue, and I hope it's resolved for the betterment of all of us in the county. So, I am distressed of what I, I have a few points to make, I'm going to be really brief, I'm going to be a little bit different. I couldn't hear half of what was said because we had so many people and I was out in the hallway. But I see this a little bit differently. I mean, just some background on me, I am a daughter of the American Revolution. I had, I had two uncles in my family that were both doctors in the Civil War. They both patched up soldiers on each side, they were brothers. One is buried in Wilmington, and one is buried in Snow Hill. So, they were on opposite sides of this family argument, fight, catastrophe, whatever you want to call it. But it did happen. It was painful. There was a tremendous amount of bloodshed that happened there. Both of my ancestors survived that. It cost my Confederate uncle, great-great uncle, his livelihood, basically. He came back here very poor. So, I understand when people talk about traitors. I want to remind you that George Washington, at the time, was considered a traitor to his country also, and we do not know the hearts of men that were before us. There is a, what I would call a historical archive out there that probably nobody even paid attention to before now. But now we see waves across the country of what I see, and this is just my view, and hopefully you'll respect it. But I feel like all of a sudden I've been knocked back to, I woke up in a time capsule to the 1950s, and I feel very defensive about my own historical family relationship. I am also of the thought process that, you know, if you don't understand that the Civil War absolutely abolished slavery, and it still exists today, what that means. And more importantly though, I feel like there is, there are things that are going on that are very unseemly, and there are a lot of people who will not come out here and say what I'm saying. You know why? Because they don't want to get bashed in the head by people chanting, "No Trump, no wall, no USA at all." And that's what's going on. Because this is a political movement designed to upset people and get them fighting each other. And I don't want to fight anyone in this room. We need consensus, and understanding, and love, and listening to one another. And you can laugh, but I don't think that's funny. I think we need more compassion, and kindness, and understanding. And if that sign remains, or it's moved, or it's taken down, it won't make any difference to anyone. It will not change our life, it doesn't offend, doesn't personally hurt anyone, you know, if you even knew it was there before. There's other markers out here, I wonder if you've read them. One of them is sponsored by my branch of the DAR, the, what is it, the tavern, and I would ask you to look at it when you go out of here tonight. But again, I also believe that if we are trying to whitewash things away, that we will not understand each other's personal struggles of how we got here. And the other thing, and the last thing I wanted to mention, is that all of this is misdirected. This council has no say over that sign, and we are spending time, valuable time, away from very important issues, and it doesn't belong here. So, if you have become of the mindset that these folks are going to do something about it, they do not have the authority to do so.
That's truly incorrect.
It is true.
That's truly incorrect.
Well, I will defer to council to answer that question.
I won't have any more interruptions, if you don't mind. If we have any more interruptions, I'm going to have to ask you to be removed. Everyone has talked tonight, and they've been given the time to speak without interruption. If someone is not agreeing with you, and there are other topics that may have been discussed where there could have been issues that were brought up that were not 100% correct, we're not here to correct people live. We allow them to speak, to exchange what their information is, to share it peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, John. It's called freedom of speech, by the way. And the last thing I want to say, and I'll defer to the council to answer that question if you choose to, about who has the authority. But the other thing I want to mention is there was a new, there was a Rasmussen poll that came out, 69% of the people in this country do not want historical archives to be removed. There was one, there's been many done in Maryland. The majority of people do not want our historical archives to be removed. The loudest, most violent, most freedom of speech shutting down people are the ones that are causing an awful lot of pain, I think, and that's just how I see it. I ask you to just respect my views. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council, for giving us the time to speak. I appreciate it. I'm sorry for my interruption earlier.
It's okay.
My name is Ed Tennis. I'm running for District 38 Senate. I must remain totally neutral with this questions of a monument, and the reason being is, is I do have and see the passion on both sides of this issue, and I must have compassion, like the rabbi expressed. But Julie is absolutely correct. To bear the burden, and put the burden to bear on this council of a social, moral, core value system that we have, that is dividing us in the manner it's dividing us, that's going to lead possibly in some circles, a civil war or whatever, that's not the way to go. "Who has the authority?" the rabbi asked. What can we do? Julie expounded upon it a little bit, our last speaker. These matters should be expressed when a public vote. We have the technology now to bring these issues up to a public vote with our cellphones and our technology. That is what my campaign's all about, unifying us together as one. Now, through this cellphone and our modern technology, you guys now have the opportunity to go to WMDT, WBOC, give the media a chance to grow, express your historical ideals and your compassion, and your passion for why and what, where the other side now can also hire and make the media grow, as our president wants to have happen, and he wants us also to have more power, he's expressed this. Well, I'm offering you just that, the power to express through the media and educate the public on your viewpoints, both sides, and put it to a public vote. If you're that passionate about it, and you feel that strong about it, either side, and I remain neutral. I'm not expressing one thing or another about that sign. I cannot. I must remain neutral, and so must this body of government right here. It's a public issue. That's where I stand, and that's where you should stand also. Thanks for the time. Take my advice.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Ziegler. I live on Twin Tree Road here in the county in Salisbury, and I came to speak about the sign. I did not realize that this was a time when the firefighters were here. Six years ago, just about this time during Hurricane Irene, I lost my home to a fire. Firefighters are my heroes, first responders are my heroes, and they deserve the best. They deserve the best equipment, support, everything, I cannot say enough about that. So, please consider what's been said here tonight. Gentlemen, I'm a lifelong resident of Salisbury, I was born right here at PGH. I remember Christmas parades and window shopping here in downtown Salisbury. I remember Santa's house situated on the courthouse lawn just feet from where this General Winder sign is. I remember when downtown was a bustling place where friends gathered. This sign is an obscenity. It has no place on the lawn of a building where justice was once meted out fairly, or at least that was the intention. There is no justice in honoring a person with no connection to Salisbury. A person who, had he lived, would have been hanged for war crimes against the United States. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, and I appreciate your patience in listening to everyone tonight, and I am thankful for the opportunity to be here. My name is Stephanie Sessi, and I am also a Salisbury resident and a Wycomico County resident. I'm going to be brief. There's been a lot of talk about the history. I am not interested in erasing the history by any means, but I think it's more than just history, and history is bigger than just the marker. I'm in favor of having the marker removed, and part of the reason for this is that the marker was placed, and I think it's very important to think about when monuments and markers to the Confederacy were placed all over this country. And they were placed in two, they were placed over many, a long period of time, but the majority of them were placed during two very specific periods of time. In the early 1900s, between 1910 and 1920, when states were enacting Jim Crow laws as backlash to African-Americans gaining more rights, these markers went up, and these monuments went up, and they specifically went up in courthouse lawns because that is the seat of power. So, that happened in the early 1900s. It also started happening again, it peaked again, and I want to reiterate, the other thing that was happening in the early 1900s was it was also a peak for lynchings around the country. So, there was an extreme backlash. And then in the 1960s, again, at the height of the Civil Rights Movement, again, these markers peaked and started being constructed and put up more and more all over the place. So, we're not just talking about historical markers, we're talking about when markers are placed and why, and what they are symbols of. So, these markers are placed, and specifically this marker was erected in 1965 in South Street and Salisbury Boulevard, right at the peak of the Civil War, the Civil Rights Movement in, around the country, and specifically on the eastern shore. So, and people talk about pain and how they, we shouldn't be reopening wounds, but we have wounds that have never healed. So, it's not just a matter of let's all love each other, it's let's all heal from these wounds, and we can't do that by ignoring each other and ignoring the each other and ignoring the things that everyone in this room has said, actually. So the last thing I want to say is, for me, the marker is a symbol. It's a symbol that is a divisive symbol. It's a symbol that is, is, has been erected historically as a way to squash efforts to gain basic human rights from African Americans. And I feel like if it sits on the white, on the courthouse lawn, it is a symbol of the county's values and what the county wants to express and uphold. It's a symbol of whose voices the county wants to listen to and whose voices the county chooses to suppress and ignore. And so for me, because it is a symbol of the county, it does not and should not be on the courthouse lawn. And that's my reasoning behind it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carrie Bunting, and I feel like a huge interloper because I did not even know firehouse sign all this evening. I am coming before the council to present a proposal, the same proposal two weeks ago I initiated before the city of Salisbury, and hope to do the same before Somerset in Worcester County. I do have some handouts. If I can send those along. Given the gravity of the other issues this evening, this is going to seem trivial, but it isn't to me. As a background, a little bit of background about me, I do have a master's degree in environmental science from Johns Hopkins University, but I am more a concerned citizen and grassroots environmentalist. I have come before the county to present a proposal for balloon releases, a balloon release ban. Like I said, trivial compared to the other issues this evening, but Ocean City, Maryland already has an ordinance. They rolled balloons in with their litter ordinances, so that's why I'm also pushing for Worcester County, since Ocean City has already done it. Within the state of Maryland, Baltimore City is the only other municipality which has banned balloon releases, but in the packet I've provided you, there is a listing of full states, Tennessee, Florida, they have banned balloon releases across the entire state. But there are other smaller municipalities across the country who have done it. The main reason being latex balloons, whether they say biodegradable or not, are not, and more often than not, as you'll see on the first two pictures, they kill wildlife, and it's the water fowl that they're getting into. The balloons, once they bust, go into the water. They look like jellyfish, which is the common food for most of our species offshore. The ribbons, it's not just the balloons that go up, it's the ribbons attached to them. They wind up strangling and killing poor little birds like this guy. So it's terrible to our water fowl. Mylar balloons, the shiny metallic balloons, I have a whole listing of articles where they've been released, hit power lines, caused major power outages and fires across several cities in the, across the country. So, again, kind of trivial compared to everything else this evening, but it is a cause that I feel very passionate about. If you recall, several months ago, there was a memorial service at Bennett Stadium where about 200 latex balloons were released into the air with ribbons on them. They got to come down somewhere. It's against littering laws. The city, the mayor himself has implemented stasher trash anti-littering programs, so I really push the county to consider a balloon release ban along with the city as well, and hopefully we can protect our environment that we hold so dear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Dale. I'm a county resident. I live on Stage Road up near Delmar. I know we heard a lot today, and I want to recognize the firemen, because I remember hearing about that nuclear option. I was so embarrassed. So I hope you guys can work that out. I did have a neighbor's house burn next to me when I lived on Center Street in Salisbury, which was terrifying, and so I wish that you guys all the luck to resolve those issues. I'm here because I support the removing of the sign, and we've heard a lot of facts and some alternative facts today. And I don't want to go there because we've heard a lot. I want to talk about my experience as a, when I was a young adult. I'm actually 40. I get, people mistake my age sometimes. But I came to this area in '95 to go to college, and I stayed here, which is kind of a shock. I grew up in New Jersey, South Jersey, and as a young adult, when I entered the workforce, I had no idea that people would assume I'm racist because I'm a white person. And I am ashamed of that assumption happening in this county. And I don't blame people of color, because I think they have every reason to make that assumption. And I think that's a huge embarrassment. And I think that taking the sign down would go a long way in helping race relations in this county. And I know that employers don't want to have to deal with race relations at work, and it is up to the leaders of the county to move us in the right direction. It's 2017, and I think it's sad that there is an assumption of racism in this county that, and that it is something we all need to work on. The sign is a whitewashing of history. It doesn't tell you much about who that general was and all the soldiers he killed, and I think it's one step in a long process of healing that this county needs to show some courage to step up to the plate and do. And I'm a come-in-er. I'm a come-here, obviously from New Jersey, but I have two sons. They're from-hears, I hope, and I hope you'll think of them as from-hears. And, you know, you're my county council, too, no matter where I was born. I pay taxes here. I own property. And I would like you to represent everybody, not just the from-hears, also the come-hears. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Janice Murphy, and I live on Elizabeth Street in Salisbury. I'm here to urge you to remove the marker. It's not for any one of us to say, to assert that the marker does no harm, that it doesn't hurt anybody. It's really important for us to listen, and if we are hearing that the marker causes pain, that the marker does that for any one of us, that alone should be enough. If we understand that, that it has that impact, it should be enough for us to change. I'm also wanting to make the point that, in fact, history is not immutable, that removing the marker is not erasing history, because in fact, we reevaluate our past all the time. My generation doesn't think like my grandparents' generation. My kids don't look at the world entirely the way I look at the world, because each generation is impacted not just by their family experience, but by the world that they live in. So their experiences of the world are different, and they evaluate, and they look back, and they think differently. If we didn't do that, then women would never have gotten the right to vote, then we never would have abolished slavery, because for many, many years, people said, "Oh, you can't change that. It's always been." But in fact, we do change things all the time, and I think of the marker as something that reflects how we look at the world today. It has nothing to do with history, because there, we don't take our kids on field trips to look at statues in order to learn history. We put them in front of informational sources of a variety of kinds to learn about the world. We remove the markers because we want our markers to reveal our values. And I hope that we see the removing of it as wanting to represent a value system that is inclusive and positive and non-racist. Thanks very much.
Good evening, council. My name is William White. I'm the chief with Shop Down Fire Department, one of the irrelevant departments that Mayor Day spoke of. We are here tonight to show our support for the new volunteer, or excuse me, not the new volunteers, the new Station 13. These gentlemen have provided service for the city of Salisbury for a long period of time. I did have the fortune, good fortune, of working with some of them at one time. There's been a lot of questions about their abilities and what they're capable of doing. They have provided service to that area since 1985, '86, somewhere in that area. Nothing has changed, except for the fact that they're going to be going out of another location. It's the same folks that were doing it six or eight months ago, before the city, for whatever reason, refused to try to sit down and work out their differences with them. And as far as the Chiefs Association, we were drug in the middle of this. We didn't ask for this fight. It was asked for us to try to work it out, being as the city administration refused to sit down and work it out. We have been shown documentation. We have been told firsthand that the city refused to sit down and talk, excuse me, talk to these gentlemen before they decided to take the avenue that they have. Why? The council refuses to show them support. They've jumped through hoops and everything else in order to get what they have been promised, quote unquote, for the last six or eight months by different entities, whether it be the county or the city. And like I said, we are here to show our support for them, and also we want, I want to know as to what the council's going to do over the fact that Mayor Day is now holding up our funds. This has been something that has been divided equally among the departments for over 30 years. When Chief Darling was here, he signed the agreement stating that all companies were going to receive an equal share. Now Mayor Day is not satisfied with how things are going. He's not getting his way, so forth. Now he's going to try to punish all of us. And for whatever reason, the chiefs and the volunteer fire companies in this county seem to be the scapegoat for a lot of things that are happening. We've been drug through the mud. We've been slandered, pushed around. We've not seen very much moral support from the council at all in regards to these. Mayor Day, as I just stated a few minutes ago, said we were irrelevant. We provide a valuable service to Wycomico County. We don't ask for a whole lot, and we don't get a whole lot. A lot of things we received as far as comments is, why is the fire whistle blowing? Why are you going down the street so fast, so forth? But we provide a valuable service, just as valuable as other public service entities in this county, and we would just like to see the council stand up and support us in our endeavors as we go forth into this matter. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Gentlemen, my name is Vance Webster. I am the deputy fire chief for the Parsonburg Fire Department. I've been active over 23 years and served the citizens to the best of my ability. My purpose for being here tonight is to more or less reiterate what the president of the organization is, what he has said earlier. We provide a service. We don't ask for anything other than our normal funding, but outside of that, we just ask for your guys' support. That's, again, that's why I'm here, and hopefully you'll take some, what the other chiefs may say, into consideration and support the Chiefs Association, back them up, because we're here for you guys, and hopefully you're here for us. That's really all I have to say.
Hi. My name is Lynn Mitchell. I am from Powellville. I thank you for letting me speak tonight. First and foremost, I can assure you, I am not a public speaker. I'm just merely going to read what I transpose. Second, and most important, you need to know that I am not representing Powellville Volunteer Fire Company or the Ladies Auxiliary. I am merely speaking to you as a taxpayer and a resident of Wycomico County who lives in Powellville. I have the blessings of joining Powellville Volunteer Fire Company in '82, after marrying a volunteer fireman from Powellville in 1981. We raised our two children at the firehouse. Both grandchildren are still involved with the company. If my three-year-old grandson continues with the tradition, he will be fifth-generation firefighter on my side and fourth-generation on his grandfather's side. With that being said, my son is now a paid fireman for Salisbury, and I'd like to think that he got that from growing up in the Brotherhood. Our community is small. We don't have a general store or a restaurant or even a post office anymore. We have two churches, a firehouse, a VFW, and a lonely drink machine in front of the firehouse. You are either involved with the church, or you're involved with the firehouse, or you're involved with both. Our many fundraisers that we have throughout the year provide support to three of the local schools, Willards, Pittsville, and Parkside, because they are the area that our children go to school. We support wounded warriors, both churches and other grateful organizations in our area. Our monthly breakfast at the firehouse serves as a community gathering, so neighbors and friends can catch up. As a fire company, we have the support of our community, and approximately 120 residents are on our ambulance mailing list. What I'm concerned about is, we got word last week, and it may be a rumor, I talked to Joe about it, I haven't had a chance to talk to Larry, that Mr. Culver has a bright idea of closing Powellville and Allen. We are a small company, but we are a needed company. What gives you the idea that a man or woman on long road, having a cardiac issue or stroke-like symptoms, doesn't deserve the same attention as the patient on Wakonia Drive? Are the chimney fires in Powellville any less important than the ones on Farmhouse Drive in Hebron? I don't think so. Longer response times and lesser property equates to increased insurance rates and premiums. Now, if I had my facts correct, only 30% of that big check that we get in October comes from the county. The other 70 comes from the state. So I'm not sure who's in charge of the allocations, but a portion of my taxes go to pay for fire service in my area, and I would appreciate that it stays. We deserve the same benefits. Mr. Culver scooted out. Unfortunately, we wanted him to know that we helped put him in office, and we can help take him out. The rainy day fund that he speaks of maybe could be better used. Corey, I love you dearly. I really do. Don't get me wrong. Understand what I'm going to say here. We have three, I know, we have three wonderful fire companies in Salisbury that I support, that I would do anything for. They're served 24/7, 365 days a year. Everybody needs to get along. We don't want you taking our territory anymore than you want to take our territory. Somewhere along the line, and I'm not a lawyer, but I can almost guarantee that in all those county papers, there's a legal document stating that the county council or Mr. Culver does not have the right to close our firehouse doors or change department territory. Thank you.
How you doing, council? My name is Jonathan Morris. I'm a student at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore and also a resident of Wycomico County. My intention was not actually to support the removal of the marker. I didn't intend on speaking today, but certain comments kind of grabbed my attention tonight. To me, being a resident of Salisbury and Wycomico County, I felt like, I felt like the downtown area has always been like a hub, like as far as culture is concerned. You know, we have Third Friday. We have all types of events, as well as a lot of small businesses. And I feel not removing the marker would misinterpretate what we stand for as a county, as well as who we are as a people. It does harm others, just being the fact that I work right across from the marker where it is. So I see that, and it's a constant reminder to me every single day. I work at a small business, a shoe store, right across from that. So to me, it's a reminder every single day of, you know, of the county not standing up to me what I feel is right and what's ethical. I do believe that we should show more compassion, as well as hear both rights in this matter. I also believe with the gentleman, the rabbi stating, where do we draw the line? No one's attacking God. We have, in God we trust. We also took a pledge also earlier today, one nation under God, but we also, and nobody's attacking that because these are the principles that this country was founded on. It's also founded on that we are, have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So in that sense as well, I feel like the general that is on the marker So, in that sense as well, I feel like the general that is on the marker didn't stand for those rights, and as well, he is a traitor to this country. I don't want to go too much into it because these are my own personal beliefs, but I am a member of the armed forces, and I stand for you guys every single day. Being in the armed forces, I'm just hoping that you guys stand for the right thing as well. Thank you.
My name is Barry Beecham, I'm a member of Station One, Station 13, and first thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to thank Bob Culver, I wish he was still here. You know, we were put here to be good stewards of things that we were put in charge of, and I feel like he's done just that. Basically, he understands business, and with that being said, my question is, what is the cost of fire service? Everybody's looking at things, you know, if money's not an issue, then I'd say we keep things just like they are. But the problem always becomes that money becomes an issue. To me, then the question would be, why do we have a county and a city police department? If we're in a struggle right now with the city of Salisbury and Wycomico County fire service, whether it be, it's obvious that it's not just the volunteers of the city of Salisbury that have the issue. I mean, we've got all the other county stations here right now also. I mean, I'd say that that's representing something that we all need to stop and take a look at, but most especially you guys. You know, what we're doing here is, you know, we're asking you to let us serve. I don't understand the struggle, I don't understand, you know, where it's at, you know. The only reason why you could not support Station 13 would be that you would feel that we couldn't get the job done. I mean, let's face it, why else, why else would you say, hey, you know, I've got a group of men and women that want to serve, but I can't support them? I don't understand your angle. If you're not gonna support this, do you really have a good base of business? Do you really have a good business knowledge? I have to question that. I don't, I don't mean that to offend you, but I want it to prick your conscience so that you really think about what I'm saying here, because, you know, to me, you know, volunteers are, they're something that are gonna be a thing of the past if we don't embrace it at some point and in some way. And to me, I've stood up here several times before, and I'll probably do it again before I'm dead and gone, but what's the difference between the job that we've done at Station One? You know, I know there's been some backlash from Nutter's Crossing, I'm gonna use that as the example. There've been a few, you know, key people in there that have complained, but if you look at the history of the people and where it's coming from, then you're gonna understand that it's coming from the career side of the Salisbury Fire Department. To me, if the people of Nutter's didn't know that we've served them for the last 30 years, then they really don't understand, to me, the difference, and that would be, how about Station Three? How about, how about the people of Fruitland? Do they know that it's not paid? No. If the fire alarm goes off, the guys go and respond, and they go put the fire out, and the people, the residents are just glad that the firefighter showed up. That's exactly what we want to do at Station One, Station 13, depending on what you want to call it, you know? You know, we, we really hope that the fire service agreement is rejected, and when I say that, the reason why is because the Chiefs Association's not accepting it. You know, we are a part of the Chiefs Association. You know, basically, what's going on here, you know, if, if you look at the dealings that have gone on with the city, what's happening is the, the cost of business with the city is too high. That's all it is. I mean, it's just gotten to be too expensive, and you're gonna find that out, like I said once before, you know, with the water and sewer. You will see it, you'll end up having to get in the water and sewer business before all this is over with, you know, or in time, you know? Sometimes you have a chance to right something that's been wrong for a long time, and this is many years. My father was a volunteer, my brothers have been volunteers, I have a nephew that's a volunteer. When you take a look at what's gone on over the years, you know, that's why I'm passionate about it, that's why I feel like what is going on, I don't know if you guys are really hearing, but when you have all the other outlying county stations coming and saying, hey, you need to listen to what's going on, the cost of business is gonna be too high with the city. It might not be today, it's just like what I said 10 years ago before the council, when the volunteers basically were crushed, and, you know, they were, we basically had to surrender ownership of everything that we had, and everything had to be put and titled into the city's name, and from that point on, if you, if you look at the cause, what really upsets me the most is the way that the cause had been portrayed as, you know, them not getting the piece out. The truth of the matter is, 10 years ago, when you killed the volunteers, that's when the cause for the volunteers getting the equipment out started to diminish, and the reason for that was because the pride was taken away. And if you give men a chance to take ownership of something, and, excuse me when I say men, I mean men and women when I say this, but when you give them the chance to take ownership of something, they take pride in it, and they'll do a good job with it. And Station One, we will do a good job if you just allow us and you support us. So, with that being said, thank you for allowing me to speak.
If I could interrupt very quickly, they need to change the tape before you begin. Thank you.